Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broom. We have a quorum present with Councilmembers Karn, Arnold, and Gay. And so I will call the meeting to order at 8:03 PM, subject to my continuing objections to ordinance 2024-01 and the omnibus motion this body passed the first week of January in 2024. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's invocation is being handled by Pastor William Wallace.
Father God, we thank you. We bless your name. We give you all the glory, honor, and praise to your name. Lord, we thank you for just the opportunity to live and see another day, Lord. We don't take it lightly for granted, Lord. We thank you for your grace that is sufficient over our lives. Lord, now we come to the time in which we are here, Lord. We ask that you would just be over this session, this meeting, O God, that your Holy Spirit begin to permeate this atmosphere. Lord, let your will be done. Let the agenda of this council, O God, be the will of heaven tonight, O Lord. Lord, help us to be understanding of one another, O God, that you would be the catalyst behind the words that we speak, the thoughts that we think, O God, and that we are mindful of the people that are affected, O God, by the things that we say and do in this chamber, O God. Lord, we pray now, O God, for the residents and citizens of this city, O God, Lord, that you would be with them in their place of need tonight. Lord, that you would bring clarity into the uncertainties of God. O God, for those who are feeling misplaced, for those who are feeling unheard, Lord, we ask now, tonight, O God, that their voice be heard, O God, with clarity, and that your grace be applied, O God, so that solutions and heaven's agenda will prevail. And we fail not to give you all the glory, honor, and praise due your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Marita Civility, glad residents of College Park. Please have an open mind and listen. The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions, we'd be better when different views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other. Just as a friendly reminder, all those individuals making comments this evening, please remember the civility pledge.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am Sterling Jones, your fire chief. Tasked for giving a slight, brief safety briefing for today. In event of a fire, please locate your exit and exit immediately. Please grab your belongings and exit your closest exit where you are. If there are personnel in attendance that need assistance, please assist if possible. When you leave the exit door, please close the door behind you. Once you get outside, please evacuate the parking lot, go to the closest field so you can make sure you're out of the way of first responders as they come to mitigate the response, and then wait for the all-clear to come back, the council chairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Agenda item two is additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda. Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of changes. Would you like me to propose those first?
Yes, ma'am.
For Agenda Items 7A and 7B for the public hearings, I'd also like to include an ordinance for each respective agenda item. These were distributed this evening to Mayor and City Council, prepared by the city attorney's legal staff.
So, Madam Clerk, there should be a separate motion to consider those? So, should they be put on regular business? So, we'll add those on as D and E? Let's see. We've got... One is 12 pages, the other is 11. The one that is 12 pages will label 9D. The one that is 11 pages will label 9E. They were sitting on your desk. Do we have any additional copies?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
So, 9D is for the conditional use permit. 9E would be the zoning. I think Councilmember Gay needs copies.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, 9D is for the CUP-
Correct.
-conditional use permit, and 9E is for the rezoning ordinance.
You know what? Actually, because we should probably reverse those, because I think if the zoning were not to go through, then the conditional use would not be some... Well, you know what? Let's just keep it where it is. The 12 pages, the woman 12 pages is 9D. 9E is the one with 11 pages, okay? All right. Madam Clerk, any additionals, amendments?
No, Madam Mayor.
I just want to clarify the executive session item for personnel.
There is one, yes. Yes, that is on the agenda. Any other amendments, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move forward to a vote. All those in favor of amending the agenda to add items 9D and 9E? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor pro tem?
Nay.
Okay. All right. So, that motion passes with approval from Councilmembers Karn, Arnold, and Gay, and Councilmember McKenzie votes nay, and so the motion passes three to one.
Agenda item 4A, workshop session minutes dated April 7, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item 4B, regular session minutes dated April 7, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor pro tem?
Okay. Line 1284 should be Artie Jones, not Ernie Jones.
Anything else? All right. With that change, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there any objection from the body to treating items 5A through G as one?
I just have one clarification. You're talking about consideration for proclamations?
Yes, sir.
The one for the tri-cities will be presented by Councilman Gay.
Sir, I actually asked for that to be added. So, I'm happy to have a conversation with you afterwards, but I did make that request, so...
To change?
No, no, to get it on there. So, I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline.
You know why? Because during my council minutes, I had asked that it be... I mean, it doesn't matter who honors them. I just did say it to the record.
Yeah, the coach reached out to me, so I'm happy to... We can talk offline. But, I mean, the presentation isn't an issue here just approving that we're going to present them at the next meeting. I'm happy to talk to you offline about it. Is there any issue with approving them all at once?
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item six, remarks of citizens.
Can you repeat that?
Agenda item six, remarks of citizens. First public comment, Tiffany Nicole Walker.
Hello.
Hi.
Actually, I think I need to maybe donate my time because I actually had a presentation for Style Mob University. So, I'm welcome to donate to someone who may need to express an issue. That's fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Coleman.
Dear Mayor and City Council and City Manager, a thank you to our City Manager for the items selected for inclusion on tonight's posted consent agenda. All seem to be of the desired routine and non-controversial nature. The inclusion of the budget line items on these to be charged against is a big plus. Please continue with this practice. As we belatedly addressed the 2025-2026 budget, a number of concerns need to be addressed. I have searched our website for a posting of the proposed budget to be considered as a starting point. It seems nowhere to be found. Why isn't this available to the public? In light of not having an audit of the last fiscal year yet, how confident are we of the nine-month year-to-date income statement? Is there a potential for making this year's budget decisions off inaccurate data? Much of our city's income stream is dependent on the overall airport activity, car rental, hotel and motel taxes. Attention to the business press will show many pressures to possibly dramatically lower this business and recreational sources of funding. Please remember the dire financial position our city experienced a short five years ago. Our finance manager mentioned that in his report today. Core city functions, such as police, fire, and code enforcement, are continually stressed. Please do not cut the positions requested in these areas as you did last year. Fund a cost of living increase across all positions consistent with current inflation. Address the water and sewer infrastructure needs across every ward. This next comment talks about the finance manager, and this in no way has anything to do with his qualifications. But be aware that you, through actions in the past year and a half, have placed our new finance director in a difficult situation. He's dealing with an overdue audit from a firm unfamiliar with our history. Abrupt firings and resignations, not allowing proper handover of duties, and issues plague the department. A glance at the age of job postings indicates the department is understaffed, and now is to formulate a budget without benefit of corporate knowledge. Would it be wise to contract the assistance of Ed Wall, as he is familiar with our city's finances? Please be diligent in formulating this budget.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Chisulo.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good evening. Good evening.
I'm excited, eager, and thankful. I'm thankful to stand before you once again, and I'm glad to stand before you to celebrate the good news, that there has been some resolution to the recall. I'm excited about that and thankful. This settlement, this settlement opens the next step, the next chapter for us, for us all, our community. It's an opportunity to pave the way for additional efforts for unity and progress. The ability to move past conflict and focus on shared aspirations is what makes our community resilient. Together, together, we can harness this past experiences and the experiences now to build a brighter and more cohesive future for College Park. Imagine College Park, the model city. Let us embrace this moment to set precedent, striving to be that model city in Georgia that others admire and emulate. Let us continue to resolve our differences constructively as we build up the foundation for a thriving and growing community. We got all the ingredients. We got it all here. So, I want to say congratulations to all of you, to everyone involved in researching and reaching this pivotal agreement. I'm eager to see us continue to resolve future challenges with the spirit of cooperation, dedication, and ensuring all of us a prosperous future as we grow into the model city, the model city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jason Kalip.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Jason Kalip. I live on Mercer Avenue as a College Park resident. Tonight, I want to take a couple minutes to address financial priorities as we're entering this upcoming budget season. Creating lasting impactful measures are a core function of the local government, while spending in a transparent and responsible matter is imperative. We are currently facing understaffed departments, city employees earning under cost of living, failing infrastructure, like our roads, our sewer system, and we are about to go through some wildly unstable economic times, if you haven't been following the stock market and seeing what's going on there. Thank you to the City Manager for the improvements in the agenda items this week, as last week was a prime example of suspending that I believe was not very prioritized or thought about. There was often items in there with no supporting documents, plans, projected items. When those got questioned, it was shut down in a very aggressive manner. This gives the appearance of hiding true costs and intentions. There was $150,000 approved for two councilmen up here for one-day activities that are in next year's budget. This is wildly inappropriate, especially considering we are in an election year for their seats. Dr. Chisulo just received $100,000 for his organization, yet he didn't present a budget, limited explanation of how the funds are being used, how he's going to become sustainable without continually coming up here and asking for more money. All we've gotten was a GoFundMe and an event last fall. Don't forget, though, you came out of executive session with nearly $900,000 to complete a sale that made $1.6 million. Think about that. While we may appear to have a budget surplus, reckless spending, lack of a long-term vision will put us in the red fast than we all can imagine. And remember what my mom used to say, "If it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck. It's probably a duck." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
For the next few names that I list off, I request please to state your first and last name for the record transcription of the minutes. Next is Carolyn.
Is Carolyn here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, last name wasn't called. I wasn't sure.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you please... I'll hand up. Thank you. Could you move to the microphone and just make sure they're speaking up? Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Carolyn Hewitt. I reside in Chelsea Garden Apartments on Gabby Road. I've been there for 10 years. I recently, well, March the 14th, I received a letter from the new owner saying that I had to be moved out in seven days. And when I received that letter, it sent me... I can't explain to you how I felt. I'm like, seven days? What am I going to do? Where am I going to go? You know? I've been there 10 years, and those 10 years, I have not liked it period point blank. From day one, when I moved in, I slept on the floor, and I saw roaches coming in there, sliding door, and I knew from that point on, there was going to be a problem with the roaches. When I tell you that the apartment complex is roach-infested, net-infested, right now, when I wash, the water from the machine goes from the machine to the sink in my bedroom, and it runs over. So, I'm running back and forth. The apartment is horrible. I am embarrassed about the apartment. I don't like anybody coming to my house. I'm embarrassed about the apartment. We would like to know what is going to be done, not just talk. We'd like to know, we need to know what's going to be done about... People are moving out. I mean, they're just literally moving out seven days. I can't go nowhere in seven days. I can't go nowhere in 30 days. I am a senior citizen. I'm 71 years old. I have a son. I'm his caregiver. I'm also raising two grandchildren. I have nowhere to go, and I'm not trying. I'm not going to run. I'm not going to. I don't have anywhere to go. So, we need some help, please. I mean, there's a lot of other stuff that I want to say, but right now, I'm nervous. So, just, please, can y'all help us? Can somebody help us, please? Please, there's a lot that I want to say, but, you know, I can't say it right now because I'm nervous. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie. Andre.
Hello. My name is Andre Harris, and I am also a resident of the same apartment complex that this very fine woman came from. I have been a part of the same apartment complex since 2013, and it has been very frustrating to see the mismanagement, the sheer unprofessionalism, and the blatant disregard for human concern, like human, you know, just decency. It really wasn't like that at first. Whenever I moved there, I'm like, you know, everybody else's situation has been different. But just for like the past two months, from my personal experience, our unit was flooded with feces. My mother got sick with a stroke in the early part of last year. We're not able... Glory be to God, we have found someone else to move. Glory be to God. But you know what? For other people who's not able to move, it's not fair. It's not right. And something really needs to be done. It really does.
Thank you, sir.
Shanika Owens.
Good evening.
Can you make sure that you're close to the mic? Thank you.
This is my first time. I'm familiar with a few of your faces. Mayor Broom, Roger Gay, Joe Karn. I'm a longtime resident of College Park. I've been a voter since 2003. I live in, I reside in Chelsea Gardens. I've been there 23 years and four months. I raised a whole 26-year-old child who graduated from Banneker High School and attended Heritage Elementary. I believe that my child will not be a product of his environment. When I first moved over there, Old Town Villa, what it used to be called, that was my first apartment. So, I was there when we just had the church. We didn't have the rec center. I watched businesses come and go. So, I am interwoven into Gabby Road, Old National Corridor. I know it. This is appalling. I don't know what else to say. I do follow politics to the point where, you know, I know my ward, I know my district. I try to familiarize with at least who I can speak to. I never met you, Ms. Tracy Arnold, but nice to meet you now. I don't know how long I will be able to talk, but I am full. I have stories. I have seen murders. I've been there when Hurricane Katrina hit and people were displaced, and I was there for it all. But here I am. My son graduated, and now I have a 10-year-old autistic child. This has did something to me where it lit a fire up under me. I don't know where it is going to go, but I want my voice heard because I am of Gabby Road. Today is my birthday. Today is my birthday, and I'm moving. I only had two months to pick up 25, 26 years of my life in two months. No resources were given to us. By the grace of God, the young lady that's in the leasing office networked and worked with other leasing apartment complexes, something she wasn't getting paid to do to help us. She was the last of the management company that was there before the new owner took over. So, I'm always thankful for her. But it was me that knew someone that got the ear of Commissioner Erickson, which led to resources for me to be where I am now. When I left there, I wanted to get me a house. When I left there, I wanted to get me a house, but now I have to deal with the bird in the hand. And it's okay, because where I'm at, it's, 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 it's okay. But I feel like somebody needs to answer for this. I don't know who. You know, um, I've just seen it go down, and the only time I see certain people present is when we have Halloween festivities. We, uh, bring, when we do bring job fairs, it's for insurance adjusters and things like that. It's not, uh, we have Job Corps, I don't know if, if that's a part of College Park or where it lays, but it been there for two or three years, undeveloped. We have nothing for our kids to do. I worked with Future Foundation for eight years, left there two years. So I've been in the, the school system, it says 06, I used to be a, a school, a Fulton County bus driver. So that's all I know. And I know that when we bit, when, when Tracy Y. Rec Center was built, a lot of stuff was free. Now we, we gotta wait till summer camp stop, or they have something that's being paid for in there before the public and the kids can use it. That I've seen. My oldest son was one of the first kids in rec, in the rec center when it was built. So like I said, I have, I don't know how long I have, but I'm full. And I speak on the ones that can't be here, the disabled. Like, that really got me. We have no resources, we were just given the things that was presented by the young lady in the leasing office. And I feel like, well, we're not furniture, people being displaced. And, and we, we just gotta pick up and just go with the flow of things, because this, this is what it is. No, we shouldn't wait till something happen, but sometimes you have to wait till things happen. You know, this is real. I had to, I'm leaving, I feel bullied, you know, I just, you know, the security, uh, College Park coming, you know, police department coming through there, very present now. Making their presence known, oh, I watch. But I will not be silenced. I afraid no one but the man upstairs. I'm just, I'm just a, uh, I'm just, I'm just a human being asking for human rights. And where was the ball dropped? If, if, if y'all knew that this, if I was a congressperson and I'm at over a certain area, I know where money is going, I know, I know people buying them stuff. This is a big-money thing. This is not buying just a store, this is buying a complex and redoing it. Oh, they don't let it litter, they don't let the trash go, let the grass rise. Throwing equipment in front of my apartment as if I'm not there, like I don't want to look out my window, get fresh air. All my, I grow my own fruits and vegetables on my patio. They came and threw all my stuff away and said, oh, we don't know who did it yet, because it's, it's a liability involved, that was an occupied unit. And so that's what really made me, uh, just, that was the first strike. And excuse me, I'm sorry, but I've just been crying, and it's just a lot going on. And like I said, I'm full, I have a lot to say, but I just want to know, excuse me, where the draw, the, the ball has been dropped? Why we don't have ready-to-go resources for, 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 for everybody? Regardless of if they owe rent, regardless of what their situation is. We still there, they allowed us to stay there. So if we got, if we gotta leave, then, you know, uh, uh, not, not Section 8 vouchers, we shouldn't have to call around. That takes like a month or so before they open up funds for certain organizations. It'll take a month and a half just to get a, 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 a for sure thing that it will, it will, uh, they will assist with payments or helping us move or whatever, cushion the blow. Because nobody has 200, 3000, uh, first and last month rent. You're talking about people on fixed incomes, I can fear for myself, see, I'm built for this. I don't need no script, I don't need nothing, I'm coming straight from the heart, because I feel like y'all need people like me that will tell me like it is, and what, I live over there. I know what's going on over there. The, the, the only familiar face that I have seen in the 20-some, well, in the last 10 to 15 years that was present, came and, and saw about us was Mr. Gay. Know his wife, I know him. When I was an air train driver at the airport, remember him running for office? And he's still here, still got a fight, I pay attention, Mr. Gay, and thank you for your service. I, 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 I met with you a couple of years ago about a sewage problem that was in my apartment that I almost lost my husband six months after we got married.
That is time. That is time, because two people donated their time.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
But we just want, you know, what sources and where we go from here, and we need help. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Shakira.
My name is Shakira Fortson. I'm a previous tenant of Chelsea Gardens, and I'm also on with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. First of all, housing is a human right, this shouldn't be even a discussion, but nonetheless, it is. One of the biggest demands that we have today is just stopping the evictions. Not only that, but the illegal evictions that are happening at Chelsea Gardens. These have no court orders, no, like, backing from the police. These are just written from the landlord and given out to their tenants and saying that they have 60 days, 10 days, 3 days to get out and move all of their stuff. These eviction notices with threatening letters, they have went as far as to cut off the water, lock, changing the locks on doors, putting boards over people's house, like apartments where they're still in there, just to get them to move and force them out. And so there needs to be immediate action to stop these evictions and further steps to expand these rights. Number one is stopping the evictions. There needs to be a fine for the landlord so he, so that they will stop doing this, because this is not only Chelsea Gardens, this is happening across Atlanta in general. But specifically, these people who have their lives built here for 20-plus years are told that they need to go, and there's no, like, there's no resources available for them. And just like prosecuting the landlord for uninhabitable conditions, especially in like the illegal evictions that they're putting out. And one of the biggest things that I feel like very passionate about is that the council has known about this. The council has known about the uninhabitable conditions of the apartments. Whether that's, you know, like, the, the, um, maintenance of the apartments, whether that's the uninhabitable conditions such as, um, people dying in the apartments. Like, just a couple of months ago, this is like, this has been an ongoing discussion. And yes, these apartments do need to be shut down, but there's a way to go about it. There's ways to go about it, and the way it's going, being going about now is not fair, and it's not, it's very unjust. And so there needs to be definitely more time, effort, and resources in supporting these tenants, but also tenants in general, instead of funding events such as a previous speaker has spoke about, where time is given, time and money is given to these events that are for fun instead of people's lives being at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Monica.
Hi, good evening, my name is Cassandra Meehan. I was a-
Sorry, can you state your name for the record again?
Cassandra Meehan. I was a resident of Chelsea Gardens. Now, I just want to ask y'all a question. Could you imagine having a house, a set of house keys, but not being able to go into your house? Could you imagine not being able to go home, knowing when you were gonna be able to take a shower? Or to cook dinner, or to have a safe place to lay your head? I was given a seven-day notice to vacate. I spent two nights in an abandoned apartment. They threatened me with eviction if I didn't turn my keys in. Now I can guarantee you, my apartment has not been touched. I can promise you, there probably is still a bed in the dining room, a trash can in the kitchen, and a $45 showerhead hanging up in the bathroom that I wasn't able to get, as long as a couch in the living room and a coffee table. I self-evicted because I don't know what my tenant rights are. They scared me, oh, we're gonna file an eviction and it's gonna go under your credit. Not only that, but I still owe the, according to what they say, I owe the previous management company money still. Because I was behind on my rent, because I was going through a custody battle to get my kids, having to pay for a lawyer and rent and all of this, I fell behind a little bit. So they scared me, because I didn't know. I don't have no family here, I have people that I have made my family. But nobody really knows their tenant rights. Y'all are College Park Council members, city council. When's the last, do, I don't know how many are on the board, or how many apartment complexes are in this community, or how many rundown neighborhoods that you guys have. But you know what your problem areas are. Y'all know where the rundown apartments are. When's the last time one of y'all went to go visit them? I know that y'all did something where the fire department and the police department came out to Chelsea Gardens with Santa Claus and the fire truck and all of this. And I was fortunate enough to be able to get something for my son. But my son had to stop coming to my apartment because I had mold in it. Then I had an abandoned apartment that squatters were in, that if you opened up the door, it smelled awful. When they did the, when they started demi, uh, destroying the downstairs apartment, I couldn't open up my door for a week without wanting to throw up. I had to give up my two animals, the last thing that mattered to me. I lost everything. My home, a safe place to lay my head, a place to cook, shower, and sleep. A place that I knew that even though it was a bad neighborhood and things were going downhill, I was still somewhat safe because I was behind a closed door.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Liam.
Good evening, my name is Liam Hines. And I'm proud to be speaking here alongside and in defense of some brave tenants of Chelsea Gardens facing, once again, illegal mass evictions. So I, it bears repeating that these residents and tenants all across College Park are the people on whom the city depends, uh, who make this city run. Without whom, our airport, the largest airport or the busiest airport in the world, would come to a screeching halt. These are school bus drivers, education workers, uh, hotel workers, service workers. And these people, it bears reminding again, are being given three-day eviction notices, are being locked out of their apartments. And before even this, we're facing unlivable conditions. Mold, um, broken windows, violence in their community, with never any response from their landlord besides intimidation. So the question for us is, who is more important to this council, to this city? The tenants who make this city run, or the landlords who collect rent from them? The landlords who threaten them with their security goons when they decide to speak out? Who send their goons to pull furniture from their apartment, who threaten them into self-evicting? These people who perhaps don't live in our city, don't contribute anything to College Park? Versus these tenants who make our city run and now are being forced to find a place to stay, who perhaps can't find a new apartment because of credit, because of their landlord saying that they owe back rent, which perhaps they were withholding because their apartment was unlivable. Again, the, the question for this council is, who is our priority? Tenants or these landlords, and what will we do to hold slum lords accountable? We have powers here, we can levy fines, we can prevent landlords from owning property in this city. Are, what are we going to do the next time this happens? When maybe there aren't so many people here speaking in defense of these tenants? What will be done? What will be done to protect tenants from these sorts of actions? Or are we gonna allow this to be the status quo as it is now? Something needs to change.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We have 33 seconds left for in-person public comment.
All right.
And I have, um, one individual signed up.
Okay. They get 33 seconds.
I think, I think we should at least give them a full three minutes at least.
And the rules were, I mean, the, the rules are, the rules, so 33 seconds is what they get.
I'd be fine for hearing them out, can't say much in 30 seconds.
So 33 seconds.
That would be Sergio.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
See how much I can say after everything that's been said already? The point is, I'm gonna paint some broader strokes for the picture.
Can you state your name for the record?
Sorry, Sergio Valenzuela. So, to add on to what people have already been saying, there are squatters and these tenants, there's people who are still there. This is not something that can we be dismissed. There are people who are still living there. I have to speak for the people I spoke, because they're too old to come here. They can't make it on their own, they can't even congregate, they can't communicate, because the areas, you can't even drive on certain pathways. The pipe is exposed, the water pipes are exposed, there's mountains of material, they can't get out of their own apartments. The rats that were in the empty lots, in the empty apartments, they're coming into where people are living. It is a mounting the fill
Thank you, sir.
that we have, and it needs to be cleaned.
Thank you, sir.
Next are emailed public comments, the first is from Ezron McDaniels.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council. Although the council has deliberated regarding its decision to opt out related to property tax rates being linked to the typical lower inflation rate and capped at approximately 3%, I understand that legislation signed on or about April 1st by the governor allowed additional time for cities, counties, and school districts to reconsider their decisions, especially those municipalities that opted out. I imagine that this reconsideration was due to the overwhelming support from the residents within the state of Georgia. It appears that the City of College Park's council voted against the public's interest for reasons that are unbeknownst to us, although most cities and counties appear to have voted in favor of the measure. Due to the decision of this council, it appears that the residents of the city does not have a hedge against escalating taxation that the city may impose on properties in the future. This could have devastating effects in the future, although it is purported that property taxes, taxes decrease this year. Since we have nine days left in the month, I urge this council to reconsider these future implications. Ezron McDaniel, homeowner in Hawthorne Station.
Next public comment is from- Next public comment is from Lucretia Williams.
Good evening, city council. We have recently experienced several robberies where neighbors have had belongings stolen from their vehicles while inside their garages. Homeowners have been terrified and are afraid to remain in their homes. We have requested additional presence of police force and they have patrolled our streets temporarily. We have had three incidents of robbery and the suspect still hasn't been apprehended. I do not believe this council regards our community's safety as priority. You all may not have allowed it, but you paid the bill nonetheless for a sixty-one-thousand-dollar dinner for an entity who hasn't developed or sold not one property. This is at least one police officer's salary. I would like for our council to lead the charge of increasing police resources and enforcing staff retention that will help it keep us safe. The community of Hawthorne Station is prepared to help solution for safety, not just for our community, but for the entire city. Please consider the importance of the need to address increasing crime as priority and make it a town hall agenda to make a plan of action. Regards Lucretia Williams, Hawthorne Station homeowner.
And that is all of the public comments I have on email.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move to our public hearings.
Agenda item 7A, public hearing on April 21st, 2025 for a request, request to rezone property located at 4570 Edison Drive, College Park, from M2 heavy industrial to M1 light industrial to facilitate a subdivision. This item is requested by Lenise Lyons, city planner. This item is located in Ward 2.
Good evening, Ms. Lyons.
Good evening, um, it's Kelly Redd. Um, our city clerk read that, uh, 4570 Edison Drive is a property owned, that's currently owned by BIDAR. Um, and they are looking to subdivide it and then eventually sell it to a applicant, Clean Spark. So, uh, the current zoning is M2. Um, and in order to facilitate the subdivision, we had, we need to rezone to M1 because the subdivided property would not then meet the requirements of size and area for M2. So, the M1 classification would allow that, would, uh, allow the subdivision to meet those minimum requirements as in, in regards to, to lot size. Um, in this area, to the north, south, east and west, everything is a pretty heavy industrial. Across the street, to the west is a car salvage yard. There's a chemical plant up to the north. Uh, the, directly south is a power station owned by the City of College Park. Um, and to the east is a food distribution, uh, center, Cisco. Um, so, uh, staff recommended approval. So did the planning commission. Um, it's consistent with a comprehensive plan for that area. Everything is industrial. Um, it's not connected to, um, other non-commercial or commercial uses like, uh, where people are, like, uh, schools, uh, churches, housing, um, retail centers. So, it's not impacting, um, you know, health, public health, welfare, and safety. It's kind of in an area.
Would you, Mr. Crane, would you mind stepping out with it? Okay, thank you.
Um, and so, uh, with that, uh, staff is supportive of the application as just the planning commission recommended approval at their March 31st hearing. And the applicant is here to speak on behalf of the application.
Come on down.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Here on behalf of Clean Spark.
What is your name?
I'm Brian James.
All right. Good evening. Do you have anything to present or?
Uh, no, there's, if there's any questions or any follow-up or anything like that, I'd be happy to cover those.
Okay, all right. Well, at this time, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open.
Thank you.
If anyone wishes to speak on the rezoning of the property located at 4570 Edison Drive from M2 to M1, you may approach the dais at this time and speak, or you may approach the podium this time, at this time and speak. All right. Public hearing is...
I've, I've never been to one of these. I just have one question and I'll leave y'all alone.
This is a public hearing on the 4570 Edison Drive?
Yeah, I don't know nothing about that.
Okay.
But I just want one question and I'm walking out of here.
It's only the public, it's only the public hearing on 4570 Edison Drive?
Do you care about the tenants of College Park?
Ma'am.
Public hearing is closed.
Do you have any?
No, it's all right. I'm gonna ask you to step out. I'm not gonna check in, step outside. Thank y'all.
It's more than that, so, that's all right.
My apologies.
Sir, thank you. Is there any questions for, uh, from the council? Mayor Protem, any? Councilmember Karn is exiting. Any questions? From anyone?
I have a question.
Councilmember Gay?
Next, the next item.
Okay. But that's a conditional use per, so, on the rezoning.
On a conditional use.
Okay, we haven't hit, we haven't gotten there yet. Is there a motion?
Motion for what?
To approve the rezoning?
You, you asking us for a motion?
For, motion for what? Thing was just so, it's just organized, you know, what's the motion?
And they approved their rezoning. We'll get to the resolution later, but.
We, we approve it during public hearing?
All right, we'll hold off on that.
We, we've closed, have we closed the public hearing?
The public hearing is closed.
And then now there's a motion to vote on it?
No, there is not. We're gonna move to the next public hearing. Ms. Lyons?
Agenda item 7B. It's a conditional use permit for 4570 Edison Drive.
Yeah, so this is the accompanying rezoning for Edison Drive. Um, so, the applicant, it was the, uh, Clean Spark, uh, also needs a conditional use permit to operate the data mining facility. Um, staff is supportive of the application. The planning commission also recommended approval of the conditional use permit with, uh, with the condition that, um, the, 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 the conditional use permit is, um, only for Clean Spark to operate the data mining facility and that it is not transferable. So then, in event, in the event that, um, Clean Spark decides to sell the property, have a new owner there, that new owner operator would have to come back and get a conditional use permit to operate the facility as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone wishes to speak on, uh, the conditional use permit for a data center for property located at 4570 Edison Drive, they may do so at this time and approach the podium. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gay?
Uh, I have a question for the applicant. Um, couple of things.
Councilmember, can you make sure your microphone is?
I noticed in this, uh, approval, I don't see anything related to, like, fire suppression, noise. I attended some of this, uh, data storage at some of our conferences and it's a room full of people with a room full of questions. And my question is, do we, are there, is there anything in place other than just approving? Or is there, have we, have it, have it been checked? Have this project been discussed with fire? As we did with the battery storage? Uh, I know the one on God is the streaming noise. I know it's not, you know, populated area, but is it? And I know now, they can build them now without that noise. So, is there anything that we're giving this gentleman as it relates to the construction there? So, we just handing him the, the, the condition to just go out there and build how he see fit? I know it's a permitting process, but is there anything in the conditional use agreement? That, that?
If, if I may, uh, speak to your comment or a couple of comments to that. Uh, the technology that we'll be using on this property uh, is UL, uh, UL-listed prefabricated buildings that have integrated fire suppression. So, they meet all of the UL requirements. Uh, and it's a, it's a modular unit. So, everything is already up to snuff there. Uh, with regards to noise, this is going to be an immersion project rather than air-cooled. So, it will not be the traditional, uh, type of setup like you might see at Godby Road. Uh, this is the type where the machines themselves are in tanks of fluid and the only, uh, uh, cooler is on the roof, much like a rooftop air conditioner on a hotel or a strip mall. It's a very different type of technology.
In, in regard to powering it, does that mean our city needs to go purchase more power for this project? Because we have no extra. Correct? So, we gotta buy more power, right?
Mr. Richardson, uh, our director of power is nodding yes in the back.
Yes.
All I wanna say is that I know we got new leadership. I know we got new people, right? But for me, I don't, ma'am, in the future, with these types of, which I support, by the way. But these types of projects need a little bit more due diligence than y'all just walking down here saying, are there any other questions? It used to be a time when this council would take months to vet these type projects. Ambrose would take months. And then they had one question, not one question about this project. As if it's not okay not to, you, y'all need to do a, uh, fire. Uh, it just should be, for me, it's just, because if the damn thing blow up, the first thing they gonna say is, y'all, they should've known. If you catch them fire and burn them half the commerce, commerce down there, first thing they gonna say, you should've known. Because they gonna rip, they gonna look at these minutes. The lawyers gonna look at the minutes. They gonna say, y'all didn't even, I mean, let's just do a little bit more, please, let's just, I don't have time to do it. I don't get paid to do all that. They do. Mr. Hugh and, uh, planner and fire chief, economic development, let's do a little bit more due diligence, please.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Mayor Protem?
I have a comment, um, just to, uh, to, to, to Councilman Gay's why. Uh, my understanding was that these, uh, one A through, on packet page 130, uh, well, actually packet page 129 through 131, um, gives us the criteria for a conditional use permit for a data center uh, being considered. And it, all of those, and I have spoken to my planning person and I did attend some of the meeting.
Wait, hold on, please let her finish.
So, so basic, I, I'm almost finished, it's okay. So, basically, my understanding was that these, these, these things, the conditions have been met.
Well, my comment was for me.
Oh, oh, yeah, I understand, but I just wanted you to-
If you got, if you got an idea of it, that's fine.
Okay.
But my comment was for me and anybody else who may not have saw the packet page.
Okay, so, based on, I mean-
And I talked to the planner today, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
And these are, these are baseline questions for conditional use.
Okay.
They don't get into the depth of fire suppression. Don't get into depth of noise. If it is, please read it to me right now in, in this package page.
City, city planner, can you, can you?
Hold on, Ma- Mayor Protem, do you wish to speak to the city planner? You have a question for her?
Uh, well, just to, to what Councilman Gay was saying, um, the planning commission approved this and, uh, staff is recommending it. So, is that based on, uh, the criteria being satisfied? Because like, pound, Councilman Gay says, we can't do the, the research. Right. So, the question is, has that been satisfied?
It's been, um, I would say we consider it. It's the criteria for consideration that our recommendation is based on. Now, similar to any, it, any other project that would come, um, as if through, as a building permit, it would have to meet building codes. It would have to meet life safety standard. It would have to meet fire code and any other code. The engineer is gonna take a look at it, but, um, for the, for the issue of, is the permit appropriate? That's what staff considered in the criteria. But it doesn't take away that they will have to meet every other code that's been established for data mining, for, for those types of centers, um, for building codes and fire, uh, public safety and everything else.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a couple of concerns.
Councilmember Karn, go right ahead.
Uh, I think, you know, uh, the big safety concern with these area, these are type of deals are the noise as well as the percentage of, of a hazard or something going on. Now, we've had, uh, Clean Spark down on Godby for over ten years at this point. Uh, Chief, uh, Jones, as far as I know, I don't think we've had any incidents down there at all in terms of major incidents of fires or anything like that along those lines. Uh, but, uh, we do have safety concerns and this is a step. Yes, technically, the zoning is, 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 is adequate in terms of the zoning. Um, you know, data mining is, I guess, a relatively new, you know, kind of frontier technology, I guess, so to speak. Uh, you know, it's an online platform-based business model and things are changing along the lines of these data mining outfits that use huge amounts of electricity and power and water. Um, so, my, and I am for the project because I understand the benefit to our residents. And people say, well, what is this data mining thing all about? And why are cities interested in this? Well, certain cities are interested and we have a, a larger interest in it because we own and operate our own not-for-profit, uh, electric company. Uh, this is one of the reasons why for residents, our rates are twenty-nine percent lower than Georgia Power's rates for the same number of kilowatt-hours uh, anywhere in the region. So, we do take pride in that. Um, I'm for this, uh, but with the caveat of a direct meeting with Chief Jones uh, and his fire, uh, department and his command staff, um, there are likely several questions and they probably have a list of questions and concerns, um, that, that, that our fire team definitely wants to go over. This is the zoning process. But in terms of coming out of the ground, how you come out of the ground and what precautionary measures that you put in place in terms of safeguards, um, they're gonna be talking about fire code concerns, fire compression concerns and techniques for what you're doing in the, the underwater version of what you're doing as opposed to the Godby Road version of what you're doing. Now, one of the reasons why there is interest with this city, one of these outfits is, again, we always look to put our residents first. And one of the things that we have to do in terms of bringing businesses into the city is bring in that increase of business tax base to take the residential burden off of our residents. The more businesses we have in here, the less burden it is for our residents. Now, if this goes along the lines of, of what our power director is saying, that this would generate in terms of revenues for the city, we would be able to, uh, give a significant reduction, further reduction in terms of utility costs city-wide. So, we're looking at some of these things in terms of the benefit analysis, in terms of what we're bringing into this city. But we always wanna keep our eye on the safety concerns first because that's above all things. So, uh, I'm okay with it, with the caveat city manager. Uh, we need to have a safety session, probably two separate meetings. Now, as you start moving forward with your permitting Now, as you start moving forward with your permitting and, and scheduling and timetable, now, I do wanna know what your timetable is for land disturbance permits and so on and so forth. So that the fire department, code enforcement can walk along the schedule with you. To make sure that we're checking off our boxes, to make sure that this thing is gonna be going up safely and as advertised. So, how does your schedule look in terms of, if you're approved? When would you say you start coming out of the ground? When would you say your, your land disturbance permit happens? I mean, your site planning, I understand you have these things already cookie cutter out. So, I'll let you kinda give me the.
Sure, sure, if I make, make a couple of, a quick comment about the compliance with, you know, any, any applicable codes. We fully understand that this is, you know, not the permitting meeting right here and that we will be going through all that. As we would with any other project and will comply one hundred percent with any and all, you know, requests. A, a quick sidebar too, these are immersion machine, immersion cooled. But this is not an open-loop system like you might hear in the news that requires an exorbitant amount of water. Where, once this thing is loaded, it's recirculated. So, we're not a heavy water user, just a heavy power user. Just wanted to make a quick, quick comment, there's a lot of misinformation floating around about that. Also, if anybody's interested in seeing one of these running, the closest ones we currently have are in Jackson, Tennessee. And we have two of them running there, we are going to be putting six of them on the, the property in question if approved. Regards to timetable, we have these, this equipment already in production. It's gonna start landing, it's produced in Canada and we'll be start, starting landing on the twenty-ninth. So, we've got thirty of them coming and you will have six of them. As far as timetable goes, basically as soon as possible without, you know, circumventing any measures along the way.
Okay, so timeline?
Tomorrow.
No, in terms of when, when this thing is gonna open up?
Realistically, for, for doing six of them, you, you could expect about ninety days from the day that we break ground. Assuming that everything goes smoothly through the process of construction, about ninety days.
Well, you, you mentioned a pretty fast bill for something like this and, you know, I said to myself, you know, I guess these things are somewhat prefabricated more or less.
They are ninety-eight percent prefabricated, they're brought over in pieces, assembled on-site. And then the most time-consuming portion of it is actually the, the personnel loading the equipment and programming everything.
Where is your company headquartered?
Uh, it's the, the regional headquarters is in Norcross, Georgia, and the corporate headquarters is in Henderson, Nevada.
Okay, Nevada is the corporate headquarters.
Correct.
Now, we had another outfit that came in here and had an interest in a facility along your lines. They were located in Florida. Now, they had redundant relay systems in terms of overheating of the units, so on and so forth. That they had a system that relayed directly back to corporate. And the problem was, that's great, but then corporate would relay it back to, to, to us. So, my interest is a redundant system that if you do have those type of systems that alerts corporate. We want a redundant system installed in terms of maybe our fire station number two, which is the closest to you. That would actually relay immediately there simultaneously with corporate or with Norcross. You, you follow, you follow what I'm getting at here?
I do, and our operators are actually gonna be at a Gaby Road, as is my office in Gaby Road too. So, we're actually much closer than corporate when it comes to the people that will be making this happen day by day.
Okay, that's, that, that, that sounds good.
Yeah.
So, so, so you got an immediate relay?
Oh, yeah.
But we want one at Sullivan Road Station number two in terms of an immediate relay. So, I don't know if the technology's available where we can have a relay in terms of something that's drawing that kind of electricity and power. That we probably need to be aware simultaneously in terms of, if, 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 if there's an issue, if, if there ever is an issue. And again, we've had the one on Gaby and we haven't had an issue like that since, since it's been in, in operation, but.
Referring specifically to fire suppression system.
Right, well, this, this is why we have a couple of meetings with the chief and, and, and try to get some, make sure that we, we have a, if you have that, that instant relay system. We, we wanna have access to that as well, cause you would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Richardson, our largest electricity customer. So, that means we've got some specific safety protocols that other customers are not gonna be required to have. So, again, the caveat with the direct meetings and, you know, working with the fire department to establish any kind of additional protocols that we would feel more comfortable with to make sure that we're covered in this community. Because at the end of the day, you know, you're a business, but we're not a business, we're serving our residents and that's our business. So, we wanna make sure that, that we're covering all of our bases here, so.
Correct.
I have another quick question.
Councilmember Gay?
Couple of quick questions. You said, you said this won't take as much power, so how much would a six units take in terms of megawatts?
Thirty-six, six per, six per building.
And how much megawatts do we currently use now? Overall, Mr. Hugh?
Mr. Richardson, would you mind coming on up to answer the Councilmember's question?
I just wanna put it in perspective. He said he'll need thirty-six megawatts continuously, right?
Yes.
So, currently, about how much do the city use?
Our city total now with the data center at Gaby Road peaks at eighty-eight megawatts.
Without the data center?
Without the data center, it's fifty-two.
And the thirty-six megawatts that they'll use, we're having to purchase that from MEAT, right?
That's right.
Okay, we purchasing that at wholesale, correct?
That's right.
Are they getting any type of discounts or is it the regular commercial rate?
Everything, they, they, they're paying for two things, they're paying for all construction costs upfront. They're paying for the total cost of the wholesale power, so it doesn't put any expenses on anybody else.
They, they buying it at our cost, that's what you just said.
But there's a markup, there's a margin, yeah.
There's a markup.
There's a margin in addition to the wholesale.
I mean, where do we see our profit in the markup?
Margin, yeah.
So, approximately, how much profit?
Uh, we're talking about, probably about three million a year.
Annual?
Yeah.
After, after they, after they.
Right, right.
And one last question, Planner. Did you, did you only mail this out or did they put the signs out there with the businesses? I'm just surprised when businesses came, but did, did we mail this to the businesses?
We posted a sign, staff posted a sign on the property on Edison Drive and the applicant was responsible for mail-out to everyone within a thousand feet of the property.
Did you do that?
Yes.
You did it?
They did do that.
You did a return receipt?
Excuse me, I did read.
You did a return receipt, man?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we have copies of, an envelope, they mailed a copy to us, certified mail.
Correct, yeah.
With the receipt.
And, and in fact, in the, in the work session, I guess it was one month ago. We actually had the wrecker service across the street receive that notification and came to ask questions.
And just for the record, I was on BIDAR as the Mayor Protem and I actually pushed the thing going back before BIDAR. So, I don't want anybody to think that, you know, I'm being obstructive, I'm just trying to be intelligent about the process.
Okay.
Councilmember Carr?
Okay.
Councilmember Carr, I acknowledge you, go right ahead.
I would say ladies first.
Councilmember Carr, I acknowledge you, go right ahead, please.
All right, well, in terms of savings, you know, years ago, part of what some of us up here considered an, an, an over-investment in Vogtle three and four. You say to yourself, you know, we had a lot of neighborhood that was wiped out due to the FAA displacement in the fifth runway. But in terms of bringing back substantial power customers. I think that decision is gonna be paying dividends in terms of the investment that we put into three and four. And Vogtle, I think after four is completed, is gonna be the largest nuclear plant in the, in the US, as far as I understand. You mentioned about three million a year in additional utility revenues coming in. And just for perspective, Hugh, I want you to give a approximation of the total residential. So that we can understand what we're talking about in terms of a significant opportunity to take a burden and cost, a percentage of that cost off of our residential customers.
Uh, one clarification, the total revenue this, this addition will bring you probably around eighteen million. But our power costs will be around fifteen, so that's, that's the three, three million difference. What was that question again, Councilman Carr?
That, that three million number I thought was close to our residential totals.
Uh, our residential revenue now is about nine million a year.
About nine, well, it, it handles a significant portion of that. But this is one of the reasons why, you know, the, the interest is here and the location is not a bad location. But revenue savings are, are important, revenue generation is important. Public safety trumps all of that. So, at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we're covered, you know, every way possible, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Councilmember Gay, go right ahead.
I'm next.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, I apologize, I apologize.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I am the one member of this governing body that attended the planning meeting and heard everything. And many of the questions being asked were answered at that meeting. So, I, and I do understand that this land, the, the, there's not many things that we could do with this particular property. But it is located somewhere where we do not have concerns in terms of the safety piece. Of course, we want the safety, that's, that's paramount. But we don't have persons living near this area, it is an industrial corridor. And I do believe that, again, my, my, my decision on this, of course, will be based on us meeting every single safety requirement. But I do believe this is a great opportunity for us to be able to generate revenue in the city. That may, as Councilman Carr has kind of alluded to, allow us to alleviate some of the burden on our residents. Who are very concerned right now about everything that has to do financially with the economic climate in our country. And whatever we can do as a city to be able to assist our residents, providing it safe. And my, my planning member and I have been texting through this thing and, you know, we're just reviewing some of the things. That I do believe that the Planning Commission and our fire, our police, all the departments together will work together to make sure that this is a win-win for the city.
Councilmember Gay?
Oh, that being said, City Manager, I, I think that we need to, might look at bringing a consultant in to help with the permitting on this project, I don't know if this deal requires specialization. Cause I know we got new building inspector, I don't think he's here, he's there.
He's right in the back.
So, I don't know his background, but I'm saying this may, but the other thing I wanna ask you, Mr. Hugh. Are they gonna guarantee the purchase in the event they were to go default year two? Are we stuck, cause you know, we bought a bunch of power for the battery plant when I first came on council. City Manager, who was that company that we got stuck with all that power and they didn't wanna pay? So, is this year two and three somewhere in the contract? We contracted, they, they gotta buy it, even if they don't move forth, they get a divorce or something? Who knows, I don't know their legal structure, but are they committed legally?
The contract lays out that they don't have, they don't have to purchase every year. But they do have to pay for any capacity costs that they put on us. That is in there and is also required them to put up deposits for two months of the bill. So, that will cover that, that's already in place for the Gaby Road site.
So, they, they, they don't have to commit to MEAT for three years, is the annual commitment?
Well, the contract we have been sent out recently goes through twenty-twenty-eight.
See, so you saying City College Park is contracting with MEAT to twenty-twenty-eight for this power?
No, when we're talking about to Clean Spark.
To Clean Spark?
Yeah, yeah.
But our commitment to MEAT is annual, the purchase of this power?
Well, I mean, they just provide us power as we need it, we're not contracted to buy it, only, only when we need it.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
So, they gonna purchase the power, the eighteen million, he's gonna, they gonna pay for it? The power they gonna buy to get it started, they're paying for the power?
Yeah, MEAT will provide it to us, yes.
But Clean Spark is going right to check.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'd like to also add that we're paying for infrastructure costs to connect, there's no burden to the City College Park for this project. Just as we've done with our other site. So, there, you know, for example, like others, other businesses, you may absorb some of that cost, we're, we're going to pay our own way for connecting.
Didn't we do some of these contracts at the last meeting?
We did, they were approved and they were sent out, they've been sent out this week.
Yep, I signed them.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
I have just one more question, how big are these units?
Excuse me, each of the buildings is approximately twelve feet by sixty feet. And there will be six. And again, just to reiterate, there'll be buffer three way around, they'll look good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This item was attached to the consent agenda?
No.
This was nine.
There are nine, D and E.
This is D and E.
Okay, okay.
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay, and no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember, thank you, that is unanimous.
Agenda item nine A, consideration of an action on a request for approval of the revised mayor and council departmental budget meeting schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. As well as an opportunity for general policy direction by elected leadership. This item is requested by Director of Finance Terry Jackson.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item nine B, consideration of an action on a request for to, to approve the emergency replacement of the dishwasher in the main kitchen of the GICC. Based on the urgent response, staff is recommending Dawn Build as the vendor. Their cost is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents. This item is requested by Yanis Barner, Georgia International Convention Center Gateway Arena and College Park Historical Golf Course interim director. This is a non-budgeted item, GL account number five-five-five dash four-nine-seven-zero dash five-four dash seven-six-four-zero. This request is in Ward Two.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Gay?
So, this was taken off the budget of the agenda several weeks ago. And it was solely because the amount needed to be publicly bid it out, right, is that what has happened? Yes. Okay, very good.
So, we got the same, but the same quotes are in here.
You mean the same person that won the award?
No, the same exact quotes, they're still dated the same, so that's.
I mean, you, you, it was publicly bid it, opened it and somebody won, this guy won?
Yes. Lady and he was, you know, he was, yes, he, he worked with the procurement lady.
Well, it, it was, it, it was initially bid it out, you know, Yanis did his homework and bitted it out.
No, he didn't bid it out, he asked us.
Initially, well, he got quotes, you know, and, and again, in my opinion, that was a serious prepared that needed to happen. I, I wouldn't wanna see us go to paper plates at the GICC, who knows? But, so he did get the quotes. Now, the other companies, the same companies put in their bids through purchasing again. And so, I'm, I'm assuming that's pretty much how we got to where we are now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I have a question.
Councilmember Gay?
I'm just curious, this was bid it out under who? The newest procurement person we had?
Veronica Brown.
And the same people responded, the exact same or just this successful?
That's what we got.
Sir?
That's exactly what we got back from her.
It's the same information. That's my, that's, I mean, the quote, that, what, what I'm confused about is that the quote is from two-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five from Dawn Build. That's the same thing that we had in the packet before. Please explain the process.
My process is I got with the procurement manager, I sent all the information to her. She sent the information out, once she sent the information out, she got back with Dr. Etterdurn and she said, this is ready to go to the jet.
That's when the information came back to me.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes, I, basically, I think what the question is, is that what we have in our packet are the, probably the initial, the original quotes from February and March. And I think there's something from April. But basically, what you're saying is that it did go through the bid process.
Yes.
The numbers came back the same, we do not have in front of us what Ms. Veronica got back in terms of her process. Is that, is that, because what we're looking at, there's no way that she, that, that these dates can, the dates what we have in our packet is old stuff.
Right.
So, what you all are saying is that it went through the process.
Yes.
And the same exact numbers came back.
That's what I got back from her, that's what she sent to.
Well, then if that's the case, let me ask you this question. And I'm fine with it, but during the pre-bid meeting, you know, when they, the same exact vendors were there, they came to City Hall, y'all had a, y'all had a pre-bid open, were you, were you there?
No, I wasn't there.
We, we didn't do that, huh? You wasn't there?
No, not for a pre-bid meeting.
Not pre-bid?
The opening of the bids, yeah. The opening of the bids, you know?
Were you there?
No, I wasn't there. I just got the information back from her.
Were you there, City Manager?
As far as the opening of the bid, uh, no, I, I wasn't there.
So she just sent you an email that says this is who was successful?
Yes.
She was the only one that scored?
And I got copied on it.
She was the only one that scored? The, the, you know, normally when we, you, you normally, normally the Department of Director serves the purchaser.
I, I think we are, I think what we need.
Please let, please let him finish. Oh, will you finish? Go ahead, Councilmember Gay.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying, she's been, is she here?
No.
No, no.
Oh, I'm just saying, she, this person has been very picky since she's been here, and I'm just curious. Was there a pre-bid opening, exact same people came, exact same number? It's just such, just such a coincidence? That's all I'm saying.
I, I can answer tomorrow, you know, as far as the process that she used and then, but I know she got with Yanis, you know, information was turned into, and she, you know, um, from what I was to, she sent it out.
All right, that's fine. One last question.
Sir.
Did you attend the pre-bid meeting?
No.
Were you invited?
No.
Mr. Barner, did you ever see a bid for it?
I'm next.
Let me ask this question. Mr. Barner, did you ever see any bid drafted for this particular purchase?
I only received the email that she sent saying that it was ready to go to the agenda that she sent to the city manager and myself.
Are you aware of any bid, any bid meetings at all?
No.
Councilmember McKenzie.
All right, and you know, it would be nice to allow the governing body members to, to at least uh ask questions. I um, I am totally in favor of getting this, I mean, I can't think of how many events I've been at the GICC and eating, even down to Saturday night, and you guys do a great job. So I want us to get this done, but we also just need to, I think what we, I'm just wondering, uh, can we, can we make a motion to approve the lowest bid based on us, but we still need to see what Veronica has? Um, if this has been done, I mean, I want you to be able to move forward and get this washing machine replaced, this dishwasher rather, replaced, but we do not have in front of us the documentation that confirms that there was actually a bid. And in, in terms of transparency and for even our people and for us to know, we need to see that. So I, I mean, I don't know, uh, uh, Winston, can we vote based on, or do we need to put this off to the next meeting?
God knows, I hate to be the bad guy. I mean, but you know, I thought it was fundamentally clear at the last meeting that we needed to go through a public bidding process, and we may have done that. As I sit here now, I cannot confirm, I don't know, but the problem is, you don't know either.
We don't.
And so, and so here we sit, and so I, I would not recommend that you approve unless you are satisfied of that that requirement has been met.
Can, can I make a suggestion then?
Count, hold on, I think Councilmember Arnold was next.
I, I did. I had a question in reference to the, um, it says that it's non-budgeted, but then it gives a, an account number. How is it that we have an account number if it's not budgeted?
I was going to take it out of the RRE now, the repair and maintenance.
I see. So then it would require a budget transfer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure that we're not taking a vote unknowing and we're using fund balance again.
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Karn?
Uh, uh, City Manager, uh, my suggestion would be uh to approve this based on verification with purchasing that, that the bids did go out. I did see the posting reposted on the city website, so I did see that with my own two eyes. So, um, I mean, I feel confident that it went properly. Uh, I would approve it with the caveat that uh, City Manager have purchased and verify.
Yes, sir.
Um, and uh, we get the updated documents. That way we can just peruse those, but I'm, I'm confident that, that the purchasing director did exactly what she's supposed to do. Now, to Winston's point, if purchasing did not do what we, what we, what we made understood, then City Manager, that's something that you're gonna have to handle uh with your staff member, you understand? So I would, I would motion to approve this uh under the condition City Manager have purchased and verify the rebidding and the updated documents. I understand sometimes the dated documents can get in the packet, but uh, at this point, we want to make sure that we uh have everything uh verified, that this bid was rebid and uh it was done properly. So I would motion to that effect uh with that verification first thing in the morning and uh try to move forward to get the equipment that we need uh to uh operate our convention center here properly.
Madam Clerk, who made the initial motion?
Say it again. I'm, I made the initial motion, but I am still in discussion. I, I am.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, one second. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I have that Karn made the initial motion and Mayor Pro Tim.
I second.
Second.
Okay. So Councilmember Karn, are you amending your motion?
I'm amending my motion with, with those caveats. Uh, verification from purchasing, updated uh source material, and uh, again, if something was not done as properly, the City Manager, that's something that you're gonna have to uh handle.
Councilmember McKenzie, do you still hold your second? Hold on, hold on, wait. He's, he's amended his motion, so are you still?
I'm not ready to second it.
Is there a second on the motion, on the amended motion?
I'm still in the, the, the other piece.
He's amended his motion, I understand, but.
Right, but I'm still in the motion, the first motion.
One moment, please. There, is there a second on the amended motion? All right, there is none. Go right ahead.
My, my concern, we, we have a budget meeting on, we have meetings scheduled for this week for Wednesday and Thursday, and I'm not comfortable voting on this until I see the documentation. My suggestion is that this be included, or if, even if we want to make this in terms of a special call. I do understand the urgency, but just as people wanted to see budget line items the last time, I think that we all deserve to have the proper documentation in our packets. You know, one of the reasons that I did not vote in favor of these resolutions tonight being added to the agenda is because they were given to me when I arrived. I have read them now, but I was not going to approve something that I had not had the opportunity to read. I am able to vote when we get to that now because I read it. So I'm just saying, I think that we do have meetings this week. If we can add this on in our workshops as, or add a special call for thir, for Wednesday, Thursday, probably Thursday, because that gives us plenty of time to publish it and put this on the agenda. To me, that is the safest, most ethical and legal way to handle this.
Council, uh, sorry, Mayor Pro Tim, I wholeheartedly agree. Councilmember Karn?
Uh, I, I understand where you're coming from and I don't disagree. Uh, all right, today's Monday, April twenty-third is Wednesday, so we tack it on as an addition. I mean, it's a public meeting, so we add this on, and uh, does it have to be a completely separate meeting, or can we, I mean, we, we, we can?
I, I would recommend you not amend an agenda, and I, I would, I would suggest that you do a special call meeting on one, uh, I can't, I can't do the math in my head whether you would have enough time to do it for Wednesday.
If we do it Thursday, like fifteen minutes beforehand.
Well, if we have it on Wednesday, fifteen minutes before the meeting, is that?
No, we're talking about time. I'd like to make, I'd actually like to make a motion that we call a special meeting for Thursday to address this issue.
Hold on one second, hold on, because there, we're in the discussion section on this one, just hold off on that just a second. Is there any further discussion on?
I do have one coming.
Councilmember Gay.
To, to, to avoid this in the future, what we've normally done as a practice is in our agenda package, put the unsuccessful bidders in the package. There's even, we even got a chart or page that you just write their name and the amount they bid it on, and that'll solve all of this.
Okay, so.
If we could just get the packets, that would be great. I mean, just, just the entire packet, just send it on and, but, Councilmember Karn?
So Thursday gives us the forty-eight hour time requirement.
Yes.
Okay, so Thurs, Thursday works. City Manager, one thing I would also suggest, uh, anytime we've got a purchasing item, I think that's north of one hundred thousand dollars, we need to make sure the purchasing director is just here. So let's, let's make sure we, uh, make sure that that happens, uh, because that's, that's major purchasing. We could have got some verification and, you know, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing now will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Did, did we get a second on my motion?
I sec, I, I second the motion.
No, the, the original motion is still, no, the original motion is still on the floor.
Right.
Well, I, 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 I withdraw that motion.
He withdrew.
Okay, all right.
So now I need to make a motion.
Uh, ma'am, before we vote, can I just ask a dumb question? Can the City Manager just call her later and ask if she bid it out? And then we be done with it?
Don't you want to see that? Don't you want to see it?
I know, if she says she did it, I mean, why would she say she did it if she did? You call everybody else when we're here. Just call and ask. Did it go out public? Did she say yes? Let's just vote for it. Get over it.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Gay, I do understand where you're coming from, but that doesn't satisfy the fact that we have not seen this documentation. I do not see a problem with forty-eight hours.
Don't call the City Manager.
All right.
They want to see the documents. They want to see the documents. Okay, that's fine.
All right, so what we do, we just do fifteen minute, can everybody get there at six fifteen instead of six thirty? On Thursday?
For a special call.
For a special call meeting.
I, I, I can make it.
I can make it.
We could do these on the front end or?
Yeah, I'm saying we could do it on the back end too.
Well, the challenge with the back end is that.
You can't publish your time.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be more of a challenge to publish your time.
Publish your time, okay. I can make it.
Okay.
It's mainly up to you, Tracy.
I can make it.
Councilwoman, okay. I can make it, Mayor.
All right, great. I'm calling a special call meeting Thursday, six fifteen to address the uh purchase of a dishwasher at the, at the GICC.
And do you need a, it's just done, okay?
I can do that.
All right, it's done.
All right.
We voted on the.
She can call, we don't need to vote. I made a motion, was making a motion, but since she called it, it's, it's done.
All right, so we're good. Six fifteen. All right, thank you, Mr. Barner. Oh, you're next again?
Agenda. Agenda item nine C, consideration of an action on a request the City of College Park to host Sis' Strut October fourth, twenty twenty-five in support of Breast Cancer Month. The three K event will commence on the Convention Center concourse. This item is requested by Yanis Barner, Georgia International Convention Center Gateway Arena and College Park Historical Golf Course Interim Director. The city's expense is five thousand, five hundred dollars, which is the budgeted item. GL account number five-five-six dash four-nine-seven-zero dash five-two dash six thousand. This event will take place in Ward One.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there any discussion?
I have discussion.
I, oh, we'll start, we'll start, we'll start down the line, Mayor Pro Tim.
I didn't mind, okay. Um, I, of course, I, I think it's a great event and I've, I'm very familiar with Sis' Strut. Um, it's saying Ward One, so I, when I was looking through, I was trying to figure out where, you know.
It's actually in Ward Two. It's going around the campus of GICC.
Okay, that's where I wanted, I'm just, are we gonna end it, are we at the golf course? Okay, so I just wanted the clarification there in terms of where it would be done. All right, so it's Ward Two.
Councilmember Gay?
Actually, I just want to use this as a, as a way to just make a comment, not related to this item, but uh, we've been copping on some emails about previous contractor relationships for events that preceded you, and I'd just like to say that we might need to bring to the workshop and discuss how we gonna move forward with trying to honor contract agreements that was not established under your leadership and that does not make us money, because for years I sat up here and said, this, this, these facilities need to bait money. But now I'm finding out, they can be, they can at least break even, but if we keep giving everything away, you're never gonna make money. So I wanted to take the time to say that.
Mr. Barner, is this actually just happening around the GICC?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing now will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Barner.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine D is an ordinance to authorize a conditional use permit for real property located at four or five seven zero Edison Drive, College Park, Georgia, three oh three-three-seven, parcel ID thirteen zero zero seven L L zero four four nine seven, to provide severability, to provide a penalty, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances and resolutions, to provide an adoption and effective date, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Is there a motion?
Motion and uh a little bit discussion.
There's always discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Karn, go right ahead.
All right, City Managers, so we discussed the additional safety concerns. Uh, we want to make sure that there are several meetings uh with the Fire Department and his team in terms of double checking the safety protocols and discussion about the possibility of additional safety measures that, that we'd like to look at putting in place. So I want to make sure that's included uh in this approval.
And, and I would like to add.
Councilmember Gay?
I'd like to add that the City Manager just take another look at the contractual agreement and make sure this city is not on the hook to purchase any power, because when I got on council, that's what I was faced with. We bought a lot of power and they backed out.
We're in an overage situation now instead of under. We still have a contractual obligation to purchase, but we are over that, so we are, we are now purchasing as well. Like, we have a, we have a set amount that we have contractually, that we're contractually obligated. Mr. Richardson, stop me if I'm, I'm incorrect at any point. We still have the same commitment, but now our consumption needs clear, far exceed that. So now we're on the market buying power or through contractual agreements.
Right, but I agree with that. I was saying, I would like the City Manager to double check and make sure the city isn't uncontracted to buy the power, more power than what we contracted for, to run, to run these six generators. That's, you know what I'm saying?
All right. Councilmember Karn?
We are having, we're gonna have an increase in usage, but the additional purchases for the additional profit that it's gonna bring in. I just want to make sure that, that, you know.
And Mayor, if I may, the Councilmember is justifying it by a savings to the residents, so I guess what I'm hearing is that with this much amount of extra energy, extra revenue, are we saying that we're gonna, somebody's gonna make a motion to give our residents like an abundant discount?
Well, well, it's my intention in one way or another to bring that to the forefront. Now, this will profit us an additional three million dollars in additional revenues for the city in terms of, from, from, from power, from the Power Department itself. Us purchasing additional power makes us money. Now, unlike water, if we had to purchase additional water, we're gonna lose money because we purchased it from East Point. Follow what I mean, and the water goes, gonna go.
But we're gonna take the three million dollar profit and take and cut down people utilities, what I'm saying?
Well, that's my, that's my intention, and one of the reasons, since, since you brought it up. Well, you asked me. My recommendation was this. This is an opportunity for residents. Now, we made a historical commitment to our residents. Uh, Councilmember Gay, you led the charge with the uh Homestead exemption, and if all goes well in November, uh, I think residents will approve that, and that's a tremendous zero city property taxes for perpetuity, which is a security blanket that many other cities do not have. So that's a big deal. Here's the problem. You know, we did something for a considerable percentage of our residents in the community. Now, the problem is, and I said, you know, there has to be some equality with what we're doing, so I, I applaud what you're doing, I supported what you're doing, absolutely. The reason why I thought this would be something that would lead to some further equity, you gotta keep in mind. you got to keep in mind, seventy-five percent of our residents do not own a home. Say it again, seventy-five percent of our residents do not own a home. The vast majority of residents that were out here earlier do not own a home. So my thought was equalizing things a bit. Whereas the residents who do not own a home, who are sixty-five and over, we, we, we couched some additional utility savings for those residents. That's equivalent to the reduction in taxes of our homeowners, more or less. So in other words, sixty-five and over, if you do rent and you are with College Park Power, we look at a discount there, equivalent to what we did for our other senior residents. But these residents, when you get that age, a lot of times, it's a situation where over sixty-five, if you don't own a home, the likelihood of ever owning a home is significantly, you follow what I mean? So this is just, this is just about equity and it's a blessing if we're able to do it. If we get additional profits in, we want it to go straight to the residents most in need. Those are our seniors, but we can't forget about the seniors in our multifamily community. So I just, that's, that's...
Is this revenue restricted? Is this revenue, it's not?
No, it's not.
Okay, alright, there it is.
That's not part of the motion. I just wanted to tell y'all what, what, what I got, what I, what I, what I saw with this. And we all have mostly rental communities, I mean, uh, in terms of citywide, so we, we don't want to forget about them as well. So I think in fairness, if the seniors got savings that own homes, the seniors should get some savings that do not own homes. And this is probably the best way to do it since we've got that kind of a profit margin we could be looking at potentially, so.
Or we could cut utility rates across the board.
Amen.
Amen.
Well, we could look at that too, but again, the homeowners, and I'm a homeowner, so would still have utility cuts and the property tax decreases. So we got to, we got to keep in mind, we want to make sure we cover everybody. And so I just put it at that and also, those that are the most in need are those that are most in need, you know?
Honestly, in terms of economics, if you just want to talk about, spending thirteen million to make three million, it ain't like this is a big deal, like, you know, it's not like... This, I mean, this is a lot of money to spend to get a three million dollar song game. He's spending it, but it's not like you're making thirteen million dollars and you're spending three to get it. You're spending thirteen million to get three and, and you ain't guaranteed the three. You really not. A man may, somebody just say, we not doing it next year. So I just want to put that out there too. I don't want to use our residents as a, as a smokescreen that this is what we doing.
Alright, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. Um, just, you know, just chiming in on the conversation. Um, I like, I like the idea of, 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 I, I think that, let's see how it's going, let's see what happens because, you know, like you said, Roderick, you just now, Roderick just, um, excuse me, Councilman Gay, just said, uh, you know, this could just be for a year. So, um, but perhaps we don't do anything in the first year and, and then we see what that, what we have. And, uh, and then to add what everybody's saying, I, I could see a reduction for all our utility customers, which would be, you know, a, a, a decent amount. But then, uh, look at the numbers, our finance team can look at the numbers or whoever utility or this is, how much would it cost to offer that to the seniors in the apartments? So I'm sure there's ways that we can do this, but maybe we just need to put on another agenda.
Or there are some cities that don't have property taxes that are MEAG cities, another thing.
Okay.
But anyway, any further discussion? Hearing now will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Hugh, just for the record, this contract goes to twenty twenty-eight, correct?
We did the contract at the last meeting.
I just wanted to make sure, well, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, so it wasn't a one-year deal. Hopefully they'll be there a lot longer with us.
I think they will after they spend all this money to get started.
I think it's, I think so.
Madam Clerk?
Agenda item nine E, an ordinance to mend the official zoning map of the city of College Park, Georgia by rezoning that certain parcel of real property located at forty-five seventy Edison Drive, College Park, Georgia, three oh three three seven, parcel ID thirteen zero zero three seven LL zero four four nine seven, to provide severability, to provide a penalty, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances and resolutions, to provide an adoption and effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Any discussion? Hearing now will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous.
Agenda item ten, city attorney's report.
Nothing beyond, uh, what was in the packet. Thank you very much.
Agenda item eleven, city manager's report.
Mayor, council, residents and business owners of College Park. Last month, I opened this, um, report by announcing the deployment of Wi-Fi throughout the whole city. Um, I'm glad to report that, you know, uh, we completed the installation of Wi-Fi citywide. Um, I want to also highlight the incredible work of, uh, the police department. Our crime has been reduced by seventeen point six percent compared to this time last year achieved. Um, tell the department, you know, good looks, okay? Thank you all and, um, and as far as even the homeless and councilmen, as much as I ride around, I haven't seen, you know, as I told you, I haven't seen. And so tell the team, I say, you know, thank, thank them. Um, while we have all noted some exciting milestone that we had in recent month, I want to thank all our staff, especially our volunteers. Um, this in reference to, uh, the senior tech lab and the guardian over there, Brady. Thank you, councilor. Yeah, that went well. And another one is, um, we talk, talk, talk about calling College Park home. Uh, the Nigerian group that came here, you know, expressed that, the Ghanaian group that came here, you know, uh, expressed, you know, ca- calling College Park home and, um...
Yes.
Um, I just would like for all of us, um, you know, to, to buy, even though the bulk of us live right here, but to, you know, um, just get, you know, get them to, um, adopt us as a sister city. And, um, um, I even talked to some Nigerians to their, you know, business owners here, you know, that are proud to call College Park home. So we just need to keep on, um, you know, doing that. And last, where the list is, and the, uh, keep College Park, uh, beautiful and I'll, I, you know, ask everybody to sign up, you know, as a great American cleanup, to be part of the, um, cleanup for the whole entire city. Thank you all.
I, I have a question for you in regard to your, uh, city manager's monthly report, and it's actually for both of you. So I'm, I want to make sure I understand the policy in regard to the city working on private property. What is that policy? Like, city workers on private property?
Yeah, I'm not aware that we have a policy that allows that.
Okay, because the, the monthly report reflects that our, um, our, some, our, some of our public works team was at Embarcadero on private property, uh, removing playground equipment and clearing sand. And it, hold on, because it, I'm deeply concerned about our folks on private property doing work. Was there any sort of agreement that was drawn up or any kind of notice that, or any kind of arrangement that happened prior to this?
Uh, I, I can address that, um, they were not working on private property. What they were doing, the sand was what was being removed and we would use the sand rather than buying sand. I asked public work crew to remove the sand and the sand is, is, um, um, pool to be used instead of buying sand for snow removal or even some of the, um, um, work that we do that requires or buying sand. They were there, I was there with them both days, removing the sand. That was what was done there. No, no staff did any work there.
They didn't, they didn't remove a playground?
No, uh-uh, no, not to my knowledge, not while I was there. When I got there, all the playground equipment was gone. The only thing that was removed, to, to the best of my knowledge and what I observed was the sand. I didn't see any of our crew removing any playground equipment, no.
Councilmember Carn?
Uh, yes, the sand, sand was removed and that's something that we do need in the city. Now, there are several times where city staff does work on properties. When we have serious lighting issues, we have some poles that are in apartment complexes, so on and so forth. Obviously, there's not a day that goes, goes by that we're not servicing private property in terms of trash, sanitation and the like. Uh, in terms of the playground equipment, the city did not remove that playground equipment. However, that playground equipment was actually donated by the city of College Park to Embarcadero because it was, it was used playground equipment that we no longer had a use for and we gave it to them years ago, uh, because it was going to be scrap metal. But the city, we did not remove any playground equipment, no, we did not.
Okay, it just says it in the report, that the team successfully removed the playground at Embarcadero Club Apartments and they also cleared the sand and prepared the site for installation of new playground equipment. I was just reading...
Playground equipment was, the playground equipment, the sand we removed. Playground equipment was removed by Embarcadero's contracted services, uh, person with Ventron and they came and removed all of the playground equipment. We did not...
It was the sand, you know, that I know.
Alright, I'm just, I, I had the question about it because it, it's, it's right here in the report.
And, and I was with them all the two different days. We went there one day, look at the sand. Plan was put in place and went back after the place dried up and the sand was removed.
Alright, just questioning.
Yes, no problem.
Alright.
Next agenda item, report of, of mayor and council.
So I will kick it off and we heard a lot from residents, uh, tonight from Chelsea Gardens and I know that they were frustrated, or current and former residents, uh, frustrated that we did not have a back and forth tonight and understandably so. Uh, public comment is a one-way exercise during these meetings. Uh, Dr. Edidirin, I would hope that you and your staff can get us a report on where things are with Chelsea Gardens in coordination with, um, the city attorney later this week. Is that possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you very much. I want to thank, uh, our fire chief for his advocacy and insistence that we attend, uh, GMA four oh two training. No, actually, it's not GMA four oh two training, but Gina, GMA led the four oh two tra- training. I was paying attention, chief. Uh, it was eye-opening, frightening. Uh, it has, has gotten me thinking ever since last week about our preparedness in the event of emergency. And, uh, certainly, Councilmember Arnold and I, uh, talked quite a bit during the, the class about some of the things that we need to do to be more prepared as a city for larger-scale events to ensure that everyone, from our first responders to attendees, to those who support, uh, our events, are all safe. So thank you, chief, for insisting upon it. Can't wait for the next class because all of that just opens our eyes to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the community. Thanks to the recreation and cultural arts team for their amazing Easter egg hunt. It was so much fun and I got some good shots of, of the kids who found the golden egg. And I thought I'd hidden it pretty well, but the young lady found it and she was super duper proud. Uh, it was a lovely day for a, an amazing event and it went off without a hitch and it was lots of fun and all the families came out and had a great time. Uh, today, earlier this afternoon, uh, I attended the funeral of Eleo Armando Garcia, uh, one of our former College Park police officers who was serving the city of South Fulton and had done so since it's the inception of their police department, who was killed in a head-on collision last week while he was on duty. Captain Garcia now, because he was posthumously promoted, uh, served with distinction. And we heard so much today about what a family man he was and the family that was not only blood, but his brothers and sisters in blue and just about everyone he touched. So, uh, I certainly want to extend our condolences once more to the Garcia family and please keep him and his family in your prayers. I was thrilled to attend the Grady Health System groundbreaking in Union City. They are going to do a standalone emergency room and construction is underway. It is a huge step toward healthcare in, on the south side and making sure that we have what we need in our community. Uh, the plan long-term, uh, as Mayor Williams of Union City put it, is to start building the emergency room and then build around that. And hopefully, uh, we'll see lots of movement in that direction because we know the demand is there and we know the need is there. And, uh, it was attended well, very well attended. Uh, the governor was there because we all know that healthcare in our community is paramount. If you do not have your health, everything else just kind of falls by the wayside. So I'm grateful to Grady for that investment on the south side and look forward to it growing. Said it again, as we embark upon budget season, and I think we heard it from a speaker, tonight, uh, we need to be talking about, uh, raises for our staff. They are serving us in this community in so many different ways, day in, day out. We need to make sure that they are compensated fairly and adequately given our economic climate for the work that they do. And I will keep on banging that drum and we should be looking at those cost of living raises to ensure that the people who serve College Park can, can continue to do so and support their families. That's all I've got. Mayor pro tem?
Yeah, while we're waiting for my, uh, video to be queued up, I, I know you mentioned, the mayor mentioned Captain Armando Garcia. I'd like for us to take a moment of silence, uh, in memory of, of Captain Garcia, but also I would like for us to send positive, um, prayers and vibes to, uh, South Fulton Lieutenant Charles Cook, who is still, uh, I believe, recovering in the hospital. And also for Officer, um, Zaire Muad, I don't know if I'm saying his name correctly. But if we could just take a moment of silence and, uh, just, you know, send up some good vibrations to those families and those gentlemen that have laid down, put their lives on the line for each of us. Thank you very much. Greetings, everyone. This is your mayor pro tem, Jamelle McKenzie, with my April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five report. It's been a wonderful two weeks in the city of College Park. Let me tell you about it. Hoping you had a great Easter. We started early in College Park with our annual Easter egg hunt at Badger Stadium. There was lots of fun, lots of smiles. We even had some golden eggs and, and want to give a special thank you to our all-star Jerissa and all the members of our recreation department for another great event. On April eighth, I had the privilege of speaking to members of, members of the SMDWC during their membership event. Thank you, President Eleanor Cornelius. Then on April twelfth, we had a wonderful genealogy workshop, which was attended by members of FOA and several other members of our community. I want to say special thanks to Dr. Lanise Littleton and her team from the Atlanta History Center for helping us in our efforts to preserve our College Park history and heritage. And speaking of college... And speaking of College Park heritage, on Palm Sunday, I was honored to be the guest speaker at the Men and Women's Day program at the one-hundred-and-twenty-six-year-old Mount Zion Church, which was one of the first black churches in College Park. Special thank you to Pastor Esther Powers and her congregation for the invitation. On April fifteenth, I completed an overview course for senior executives and elective officials that was taught by the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agencies. Uh, this was a really great opportunity. It provided myself and several members of our staff and department heads with national incident management training, ensuring that we, as a city, are prepared for emergency incidents. Special thank you to Chief Sterling Jones for leading the way in this initiative. And last week, I visited the town of Brazelton, Georgia, and, uh, had some opportunity to go down in their downtown corridor and see some of the development. They're doing amazing things there. And I'm looking forward to bringing these things back to the City of College Park as I meet with our economic development teams and marketing teams. Great things to come. And speaking of great things, we had a phenomenal time at our family movie night at the Auditorium this past Saturday. I wanna thank the Granville Group for coming and sponsoring this event again. And we just really had our, our families, we had our seniors. And special shout-out to Mr. Cook and to our College Park PD for coming out and making sure we had lots of popcorn. In addition, on Saturday, I represented the City of College Park along with Councilmen Carr and Gay at the Jardine Spears Autism Foundation Event at the GICC. Did you know that one out of every thirty-one children in Georgia is diagnosed with autism? And it was so great to see so many fellow legislators and friends out supporting this much-needed event. Now for Ward One updates and events. Did you know that the gazebo that we are currently constructing on the City Hall lawn will be the first of its kind since Cox College was erected late in the eighteen hundreds? Our new gazebo will go up within the next few weeks. And speaking of construction, we are currently replacing the chiller at Brady, and that's also gonna happen in the next few weeks. And speaking of Brady, I wanna thank our Buildings and Grounds Crew, led by Sam and Carlton, for staying on top of making sure that we are getting our Brady Trail where it needs to be. And that being said, we are currently in the design phase for upgrades and renovations to our depot, which will become our new visitor's center on Main Street. And tomorrow, we continue our Georgia Cities Week with one of my favorite events, Bingo, which will be held at the Keith James Auditorium. And then on Wednesday, we'll have Touch a Truck in the Public Safety Parking Lot. Furthermore, on Saturday, there will be a special course being taught for homeownership. And from eleven to two on Saturday, we're having our first tea party at the Garden. It's gonna be a smash. Thank you to all those that contributed to this wonderful event. And on April twenty-eighth, we're having our third Main Street Business Connect. Come on out and network. It'll be held at Code Forty-four on Harvard. And mark your calendars for May eighteenth. We're starting budget workshops this week, but on the eighteenth, I'll be sharing more about my community enhancements. This is Mayor Protem, Jamelle McKenzie, and we're building College Park better.
Councilmember Carr?
All right, a couple of things, uh... First, I wanna send my condolences out to the, uh, to the Willis family on the loss of, uh, one of their grandchildren. It's a pretty, pretty hard deal to deal with for any, any family, so our hearts and prayers are gonna go out to that family. Also condolences regarding Captain Garcia, uh, former, uh, family member, and, uh, Lieutenant Cook, hopefully he heals well. Uh, I did attend the, uh, Jardine Spears Autism Event, Foundation Event. That was a well-attended event. Uh, autism is serious, it's real, and, you know, our health is, at the end of the day, the top priority in terms of making sure that residents can enjoy quality of life, keeping a good quality of health, nutrition, diet, exercise. And we wanna make this city conducive to all of those things through our initiatives, like the community gardens, the additional park space we're pushing for, and things that will, uh, you know, feed one's mind, body, and spirit as well. Couple of things, uh, I wanna do, uh, City Manager, I wanted to look at the two-plus-acre property, uh, that's at the Roosevelt Highway entrance of the GICC. Now, a few years ago, we contracted that parcel, uh, to a, uh, developer outfit that was gonna do a ALOF, dual-brand, uh, hotel development on that site. It's going on, uh, I guess about three years now, so I wanna see where that's at. And, uh, actually, I think it'd be a good idea for you to maybe, uh... This is at the Roosevelt Highway entrance of the GICC. This was, uh, years ago, it was next to the E.L. Johnson, uh, Auto Parts place there. That's the, but it's this parcel that the city owned. Yeah, coming to the, to the Convention Center campus. It's the parcel attached to the Roosevelt Highway entrance. Uh, so, at some point, we need to pull that development agreement just to see where it's at. There may be some clawbacks in there in terms of, uh, you know, the outfit hasn't gotten off the dime in terms of any development or any movement whatsoever that we could tell. Uh, so if there's a reversionary clause in it or whatever have you, I wanna look at that because there's interest in that parcel, and there's been no movement on it. Uh, so we wanna find out, make sure that, you know, wh- where they're at, uh, with that piece of property. You know, there are a lot of issues that have been going on with our multifamily community for many, many, many years. Uh, I've been probably the most staunch advocate about substandard living conditions in College Park. I formed Multifamily Task Force several years ago in an attempt to make sure we focused on the unacceptable standards in our apartment communities as a top priority. Uh, I have been pushing and advocating for the changes in the ordinances that needed to be made so that we had enough teeth and enforcement to actually force these slum lords to improve their properties. We have increased nearly every single fine that speaks directly to multifamily issues. So we are cracking down on this. It's a, not a good state of affairs and not a good situation when you're dealing with residents, uh, that are looking at being, uh, displaced. Councilwoman Arnold, I know we have probably the lion's share of the multifamily apartment communities. Uh, so we wanna definitely try to put our hands together and see what we can do in terms of making these transitions a little less, you know, burdensome on, on residents. You know, we talked around the idea, City Manager, about, uh, contracting with some type of a community service provider, and perhaps we can put together, um, with, with a service provider, um, you know, some kind of a, uh, some kind of arrangement that may make things a little bit easier, uh, for, for residents. Uh, now, when you're dealing with private property issues, it's just that private property issues. Interfering with a contract between a property, property owner and a tenant, we don't wanna get caught into the middle of that, and that's very important. At the same time, we have to make sure that our residents are covered and taken care of, meaning our primary responsibility as a city is to provide safe and decent living conditions citywide. That is our primary responsibility. But it's hard for any city legally, legally speaking, to interfere with a privately-owned property and their tenant's contracts or their living arrangements at the same time. Now, we put more help into our residents in need than most cities. Our Community Enhancement budget proves that fact, and we will continue to put in as much as we can in terms of helping those that need a hand up. One of my projects, uh, City Manager, the Community Resource Center for Residents, we're working towards that, where, uh, we've identified some property and some land for that. That Community Resource Center is gonna be a multi-purpose center, not only for community meetings for residents in Ward Two, but also it will be a place where someone can come in if they need to make copies of important documents, uh, things like this, if they need something notarized perhaps. Also, that Community Resource Center is gonna include a makeshift thrift store in that Community Resource Center. I've talked to countless residents who, just like me, uh, have a basement full of items that somehow accumulated, and they would love to get rid of some of this stuff. Uh, a lot of the donations we want for this Resource Center will come from our local residents that may wanna give. We have multifamily, uh, renters that maybe cannot afford new furnishings, for instance. I can't, uh, uh, there are countless families that come into our apartment communities that, uh, uh, need a baby crib and perhaps cannot afford a brand-new one. So, uh, so a gently-used one is gonna be, uh, a good thing, or a lamp, so whatever have you, and things that people can donate. We're gonna help our community like never before, and we're gonna be reaching out to our community because there are a lot of folks that are doing pretty well and doing pretty good. While at the same time, folks, there are people struggling out here, and we have to make sure we provide services that meet residents where they are as well. So this Community Resource Center, again, will have some features and some things that we haven't done before in the community. But this is the call from the community. A lot of folks need a hand up, and we're gonna make sure we provide those things, but it's our community as a whole supporting that. So when the calls go out for contributions, uh, for our thrift store, we wanna make sure our neighbors, our homeowners, that have some items that may be something used or discarded, that would be a big help to residents that are living month-to-month. So we wanna make sure we're, we're pushing for that and pushing for, uh, uh, all of these type of things that we're looking to move the city forward with. The Touch a Truck Event that's coming up, the Georgia Cities Week, started this week. Uh, so, City Manager, we wanna make sure Communications is getting that out far and wide. I think I saw five activities every, every day of the week coming up here, uh, that are some spectacular activities for residents. But if they do not know about it, we wanna make sure that they're reached out and contacted. Um, I don't know who's handling the, uh, Touch a Truck, but we wanna make sure the bookmobile is included, uh, in the Public Safety Parking Lot. We did debut a bookmobile and gave out close to a hundred books first time out. It was very successful at our Easter egg hunt, uh, on Camp Creek on Saturday. Uh, so it went over very, very, very well. But, uh, we're still moving forward with all of the things that we have to work on and take care of. Uh, Chief Rogers, last thing, uh, we spoke about Hawthorne Station. And, uh, City Manager, I'm looking for two additional, two cameras, city cameras additionally in Hawthorne Station as they're, they're lacking. So we wanna make sure we have that coverage, and we wanna look at an additional flock camera as well to complement our cameras, uh, to make sure we're getting the kinda coverage we need up there. Uh, springtime and summertime is coming, as you know. Uh, some of the incidents do go up in terms of, uh, criminal activity. But Chief, we're gonna double our efforts, uh, citywide to make sure that we're covering our residents and, uh, protecting the properties and everything that we're required to do and that we have been, uh, requested to do and called to do. So, that's all I got. Uh, thank you so much.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, I'll start my, with my list here. So I started out my past two weeks with the Easter egg hunt as well. Uh, actually, I made it there a little late, uh, from a previous commitment, but, uh, it was good to see the, the kids out there, um, hunting for the two thousand eggs. I understand that it was over two thousand eggs that were out at, um, Badgett Stadium, and so they were really excited about that. Uh, shortly after that, I, uh, went to the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center, to the Community House, to join, uh, the Gagnet Media Group, who was doing a focus, uh, session, a fo- focused group session, um, speaking to our residents to get their input on what they wanted to see at this new Grady facility that's going up in Union City. And so, um, it was good to be able to participate there. I also offered a, uh, Ward Three tour to our interim Economic Director, Mr. Brian Hooker, so that he could get a better understanding of what Ward Three looks like, and so that we can envision how we could drive a, a little more economic development in the city. I wanna, uh, make sure that I thank, uh, both Ms. Johnson and Ms. Bronson for, um, their hard work on the Easter egg hunt. Uh, again, like I said, it was fabulous. And then immediately after my meeting, so I was on a, a, it seems like a world tour, um, that, that day, because immediately after doing those things, I went to Macon to spend some time with my son for an event that he had there. And I happened to run into, uh, Ms. Valerie Lee, um, of The Wellness Spot. I, I'm sitting there watching my son, I turn, hear someone go, "Councilwoman Arnold, what are you doing down here?" I turn around, and I said, "Well, my son is number four." And she said, "Oh, Austin is your son? He's escorting my daughter." And I'm like, "Okay, this is a small world." So that was, um, that was very interesting. But it was also fun to be able to watch young people that are going to take over for us one day. On the seventeenth, uh, I had the opportunity to participate in the NIMS training that, uh, Mayor Protem mentioned earlier and the mayor mentioned as well. And it was very eye-opening, uh, to learn about our position as far as being prepared for disasters. I think one, uh, takeaway for me, uh, for a person who has worked, uh, for a few years in enterprise risk management is that we can never be too prepared, right? And so, uh, making sure that we have these plans in place, especially for our larger events, and making sure that we practice, um, different scenarios so that we are a- always on our A-game, just in case, you just never know. On the, the nineteenth, I had the opportunity to go back home. Many people may or, or may not know that there are several individuals who graduated from the illustrious Benjamin Elijah Mays High School that serve as elected officials in the City of Atlanta, East Point, Palmetto, here in College Park, and of course, the Chairwoman of Clayton County. So, there was a scholarship fundraiser for, um, the high school, for a couple of scholars there that, uh, where we were able to raise, um, some dollars. And who knows, they may one day decide to run for office too. A little later on that day, I, um, actually joined the Willis family, um, at the home-going service of their granddaughter. And, um, I just asked that the community continue to keep the family uplifted in prayer. I know that we also, uh, lost a, a officer, um, Garcia, that was in, uh, South Fulton, but was College Park be- before that time. So we do have families that we need to continue to support, um, and wrap in love. Uh, but the Willis family has definitely been here for the city for quite some time, and, um, they uplift a lot of families, and right now, they need us. And so please don't forget them. Later on that evening, I, I went to, um, to visit my favorite group of people, and, uh, that is the residents of Princeton Courts. We had a pre-Easter dinner, uh, where Mr. Baxter, if you all may remember Mr. Baxter, he's the same individual who re- who danced from the beginning of the Senior Love Social to the end. Um, he played music, uh, for our, uh, Easter dinner, and, uh, we had a great time there. I wanna take a moment to thank Mr. William Beeks, who is, um, my outgoing in- intern. Uh, he will be graduating next month. Congratulations, Will. And however, um, he is interested in continuing to work for the City of College Park. So there you go, Dr. E, you might have a new employee. you go, Dr. E., you might have a new employee. So, just wanted to make sure I shared the congratulatory message for him, and we wish him well in his endeavors. He'll be with us probably for another couple of weeks, and then on to greener pastures. That's all that I have. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Gay?
I wish I could say I don't have anything, but I actually have a few. So since she's shouting out vintage of me, Mays, I want to shout out my high school, Frederick W., that gave us Keisha Lance bottles, Marvin Aaron, Julie Bunn, me, I ain't, the list can go on.
That's our rivalry.
All right. I met with the planner today, and we talked about Airbnb. So the situation is that it used to be a lot of conversation about Airbnb in our city. Why I want to bring it up tonight is because, as we all said in the budget, a lot of our revenue comes from our hospitality district, the taxes that we receive. But College Park is becoming a very transit city, like you talk about Hawthorne Station. Believe it or not, a great percentage of those residents are actually renters, and the way they got around it was because the investors bought the properties, and they met the criteria that we put in the billing agreement. But that's not really where I'm going. In my world, maybe one out of ten houses is a short-term renter or Airbnb. Now, why is that important? Well, think about it like this. On Lakeshore Drive, I got one house that, while it was being built as an Airbnb, I mean, you could have clearly just walked in there and saw how Airbnb construction works, common air, bedrooms, certain type, you know, enforcement. So now, as I go home every night, I just count the cars and the tags. But, but why that is important is because, imagine this for a minute. Imagine you've been living in your house for fifteen, twenty, thirty years, and next door to you, you got this transit community that's just coming and going, coming and going. You know, it used to be a time that in communities, you just about could see anything going on in your block. But that's not even why this is important. Why it's really important is because it can actually threaten our hospitality revenue. For every Airbnb room, that's one hotel that they didn't rent, or one looker tax that they didn't pay for, they're drinking at home. So I guess what I'm just trying to say is, and I was talking to the planner, we need to get serious about either enforcing Airbnb or regulating Airbnb. If we regulate Airbnb, we can start putting conditions in, like how many rooms you can have, we can get occupational tax, but right now, ain't nothing going on. It's just, they just having at it. And I, I can take you on a tour and just show you my Airbnbs, and if you ask me, "How could I prove it?", well, watch this. I'll go to Philip Laton's office, and I'll get a copy of the tax, or I'll go on Fortin County's Tax Assessor website. I'll go to Williams Johnson, and I'll say, "Let me see who, who has the utility account." And then I'll go further and say, "If you go to their house, if they can't show you a lease, they're probably renters." You know, I live next door to a rooming house. They been there, I, I done got used to it. So, I know we had our hands full, but, but as a hospitality city, we need to start having a serious conversation about, are we gonna regulate Airbnbs or are we gonna enforce Airbnbs? So I, I think we should bring that to a workshop. The second thing I want to tell you is that I agree with Councilmember Corn that we don't want to meddle in affairs of private businesses. However, on the other side of that, Corn, is, I'm not an attorney, wasn't smart enough to be one. But I will say this, I done seen enough people evicted in Georgia to know, I don't think you can just go and throw people out of the apartments. I, I just don't think you can do that. And if, if what some of these people allege are true, if, if someone has actually really nailed up a door or thrown somebody's stuff in a container, I mean, that's literally criminal. And I just think, the new owner, Pete, I think he has a responsibility to this city as a landlord of other properties to make sure that he's following the law. And he should also clean up the old Target site. If he wants to throw people out, clean up that site while you at it. The next thing is that I, I met with C.W. Matthews, who walked through the Botanical Garden, and he says to me that he loves the bridge, they just finished the bridge, but he thinks we should put lights at the top. He said the lights don't actually illuminate the top, it just illuminates the bottom. So I told him, "I'll, I'll talk to my colleagues about it." Another thing that, that is that, I, I'm being, I'm being called by a lot of residents who feel like the creeks in their yard needs to be restored. The issue is that some of these people have been here a couple of decades, and they've seen the city services clean their creeks or restore their creek beds to prevent erosion. The problem we have is that through the most tax, there's some people's creeks being restored, but it's only because their sanitation sewer lines are being repaired, so it falls under the most tax. But it's confusing my residents because they're like, "Well, Councilman Gay, this has been an issue that you've been aware of for years." So we met on the site with a couple contractors, and the contractor, I'll give you a perfect example, on York, York Road, Beverly Bearden, two doors up from Richard Langford, there's a creek that is just almost dammed with trash. And the resident's saying, "When I used to live, y'all used to clean this creek, and when I take, when I take our stormwater and drain manager," you know, he wants to take the attitude that, you know, "Let me go do some further research." But that's been, that's been the attache, that's been, that's been the excuse for years. Alls I'm saying is, I was looking at the budget, there's money in the stormwater budget. I believe we have a duty to clean out some of these creeks, especially if it's channeling stormwater from our streets to... They're not bodies of water, they're water that we're, we're responsible for channeling. I also did an update on Bill Evansville. I know that's a controversial thing, and I don't know why I did it, but I did it. I just hit the send button, I'm speaking of College Park, I just hit it. But I, I, what I want to say about that is that it needs to be said that this business about robbing the city of precious green space and recreational space just isn't true. There is an alternative opportunity to replace Bill Evansville at that eighteen acres. That, that's been on the table. In fact, to get my vote, there's a resolution that says that the proceeds from that money, if they close in May, one point two-five million, goes to improve the eighteen acres. And if y'all want to put a ballpark over there, that's fine, but at any, either way, a green space improvement will go there. And there's a lot of other reasons why it makes sense, I want, I don't want to get into that. And another thing I said was that I'm a Morehouse parent, and I know how Morehouse works. There was no proof positive, there's no legal documents from anybody at Morehouse that says they get ready to spend millions of dollars for Bill Evansville. It just don't exist. It just don't exist. Another misconception that someone said is that we funded a hundred thousand dollars to action. I don't think we did. Humanity for Action, I don't think we did that. And the other misconception that the speaker said was that we spent millions of dollars coming out of his accession. He's exactly right, but those monies were restricted for tourism only, and they've been sitting in our coffers for years. So, the money was there to do something positive with it, and I'm just fortunate to be with a council that's proactive and want to move our city forward. So, I think I, I think I covered them all. I just have one other. I'm also getting called, I guess because it's election time, I'm also getting called about lots with what people believe are dangerous trees. Couple of my residents saying that trees, well, in fact, on Williamsburg Drive, two doors round from Jesse Phillips, across the street from Howard Jones, tree fell straight out of the vacant lot. So we do have a tree ordinance, right? And so what some, what some residents are saying, "Look, Councilman Gay, we realize it's a private lot, but you all have a responsibility to enforce a dangerous tree ordinance." So, we had a heated debate with the Harris family, so here's what I, here's what I suggest. I suggest we hire an arborist, a contract with an arborist, and when a resident identifies or think that there's a dangerous tree that has a bullseye on their house, that we go over and get an arborist report. If the arborist feels that the tree is threatening, that we send a citation mostly to the out-of-state property owner, and if they don't comply, I recommend that we cut the tree and put a lien on their, on their, on their property. Because if a tree falls and kills someone, they gonna go into the loving arms of the attorney. So that, that's what I think we need to implement right away. I don't think I have anything else on my report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion of personnel?
Moved.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, that is unanimous, will enter into executive session.